Please rise, please leave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All ready?
Very good.
All ready for draft?
Every year.
All covered?
Here.
All returned?
All returned.
So enthusiastic.
And all for the most.
Here.
Can I get a motion for approval of August 5th, 2025 meeting minutes, please?
So moved.
Can I second?
Second.
All fair?
Hi.
Hi.
Can I get a motion for tonight's approval of the general?
So moved.
Can I second?
Second.
All fair?
Alright.
Moving on to special items, the update from Great Rivers Engineering Transportation Master Plan.
We have Mike Beatty? Mike Beatty, yes. I'm gonna pass this stuff out, your horror story about your wedding, I've had meetings where power went out.
Yep.
It's, I'm always, I'm always trying to be prepared, so I've got a handout, we're gonna be looking at some maps that might not be too...
The power went out on me last night in the Sedalia meeting, so I don't know if I'm snake bit wood.
So I'm, it's a good plan that I brought this, is what you're saying.
They all, they all got a very large generator outside.
They do, and it's loud, yeah.
I was talking to some folks from the co-op the other day, and they were telling me about this new AI technology they have, like when power goes out. They said they've got it down to like, where as long as it's not a transmission problem, it's like a generation problem or whatever, it instantly switches like where the power's coming from, so your lights and flicker would not go out.
We lost power for 30 seconds, but then all the computers had to be rebooted, so, right in the middle of the meeting, of course.
Sorry, sir.
Go ahead.
Oh, no. I just reintroduce, I'm Mike Beatty with Great River Engineering, we've been retained to do an update to your transportation master plan. You guys have been going through and updating your comprehensive plan and a lot of the different city infrastructure elements that go with it. And so we've gone through and evaluated your existing system, looked at recommendations and discussions that you had in your comprehensive plan, and have tried to look at historical trends and events and tried to pull that together to kind of develop an updated transportation master plan for your community. And so I'd like to just review a little bit of what we've done and the, at the end of my presentation, I want to present a prioritization matrix. One of the things that in my career I've found when you do transportation plans or any type of infrastructure plan, that a lot of times, sometimes that it's a nice book, it's a nice set of maps, it looks good on the shelf, but the most important aspect of the plan is how to implement it. Because the plan is, you know, tells you where you want to go as a community, it's a communication tool to your developers, it's a communication tool to the businesses in the, in the community, and it's a plan for how you want to grow. So the, probably the most important element of a transportation master plan or any kind of master plan is an implementation plan. And so we've got a list of improvements that we're gonna recommend, but sometimes you look at it and like, man, where did the world live again? And so the, I'd like to do a quick review of what we've done, I don't necessarily want to reinvent everything. I've been working with Mr. Michael and, and trying to rely on what you've done with the direction that you've determined from the comprehensive plan and just focus on transportation elements, and we want to get to that implementation plan for the next 20 years for you guys to focus on. And so at the end, as I present a matrix of decision-making for what should be the priority, is I'd like, I'd like to get you guys to look at that and give me some feedback as to whether or not you agree that how we've set up the prioritization matrix matches what you think it should be. So let me just start with the review. Alright.
Turn it on on the side.
Sorry. Told me that earlier.
There we go. Hopefully it works now.
There it is. Alright. Probably the first thing in any kind of transportation roadway plan is a functional classification. And a lot of times people think of just, you know, the bigger road is a, is a more important road, and that's not necessarily the case. When you think of functional classification, you need to think about how the roads are used. The biggest extreme, 63 Highway's an expressway, it's a, it's a, and like an interstate or it's a, an arterial roadway, you're not gonna have somebody bicycling on 63 Highway because of the safety aspects, because your, people are wanting to go from there a long distance, across county, across the state. Similarly, other roads, maybe not like 63 or M Highway, Y Highway going through Broadway, but the intent, most of the traffic along that road from beginning to end is to go through town to get from one side to the other and to maybe go to their portions of the county. Then you have collector roads that, as the sound, as the name implies, it's just collecting traffic from local roads or maybe local, local businesses and conveying them to the arterial roads to allow people to get to wherever they're going inside or outside of the city. And so when we look at roadways, we want to always keep in mind and begin with the functional classification. So if you look at this first exhibit, this is MoDOT's functional classification, and they use this classification to determine whether or not different improvements are warranted, based, if you're gonna use a federal grant, say a TAP grant or an SBBG grant or some kind of assistance, they're gonna be looking at how does this improvement fit within my overall network. MoDOT's not as concerned with local roads as they are with, with, you know, the collectors and arterial roadways. And so they're gonna, they're gonna be looking at the system, so it's always important to have a functional classification that, that fits in with their perception, especially when, when we get done. One of the criteria for the prioritization matrix is, is there additional funding, grant sources out there that you could tap into to maybe get some of these improvements done in the community? And, and making sure that your system and the roads that you're looking at, the improvements, the types of improvements you're looking at fit within the functional classification is important. If I have 63 Highway and I've got a developer that wants to put Casey's gas station and, you know, Dairy Queen and everything right on 63, that's not a, that's not gonna be a very approvable thing from MoDOT's standpoint because it defeats the function of the roadway. The city of Ashland has roads that you need to take the same precaution in, in terms of access management to be able to manage your system. There are certain functionally classified roads that, that you want to have extra setback for, or extra access control, or maybe a different pavement type, and it's, it's not just based on, on traffic count, it's based on how the road's used. And think of design speed, if I'm going across town, I want to get across town as quick as possible, I want, I want a road that's gonna get me there quicker than one that has a lot of stops. And so functional classification is an important part, one of the first things we looked at was to review that. The other thing we did with the project, we looked at your road conditions, and if you look at these maps, when I have this example there, I've got a larger map just following it, so if you turn the next page, you get a little bit larger view of what we're talking about. But the roadway conditions in the city of Ashland, you've got concrete roads, you've got asphalt roads, and they're all in different conditions. And one of the things that being able to take your transportation system and get the most bang for the buck is you want to be able to maintain what you have. And so we started off with a rating of all of the city's roads and it made it pretty simple, good, fair, poor. If it's, if it's in good condition, you don't need to do much maintenance to it, if it's in fair condition, it probably needs a little maintenance, and if you provide that maintenance, it'll, it'll allow that roadway segment to last a lot longer. If it's in poor condition, it may not be failed yet, but it's, it's on its way. Sometimes when a road gets to a poor condition, it gets to be, just doing an overlay is not gonna be enough to, to help you catch it. And so when we, we went through and identified the conditions, did a rating on all of the roadways in the city, if you look at that map, every road that is green is in good condition, every road that is fair is in, or every road's fair, in yellow is fair condition, and all of the red roads are in poor condition.
So what are the criteria for a road to fall into each one? Some of the roads on here, like, you know, I've driven down them and I would feel like they're probably, some of the poorer ones I think are probably in better condition than some of the good ones, but I don't know what to look for in a road, so what, like, what are your criteria?
Yeah, there are, there's another rating. When a, when a road loses, about, gets to a point where it's about 60%, there's a, there's a numerical number that we can do. When it gets to about 60% of its capacity structurally, then, and when it's at that point, it's, you can't patch it, you can't repair it. You've gotta start considering on digging the whole thing out and rebuilding it from curb to curb or ditch to ditch, whatever type road it is. And so some of the roads that are at failing are lumped in with the poor roads. What we've tried to do was to identify the roads that, that we could begin spending money on or focus the, the maintenance money on, the annual overlay, chip, seal, surface maintenance, and extend the life of those roads a lot longer. If you put an overlay on a road that's in poor condition, that's at like 65, 70% of its capacity, it goes down pretty quick. And so you don't, you're not getting a very good return on your investment with those roads. So I dare say some of the roads that are, are poor, that you think are, are not as bad as some of the others are, they are poor, the other ones are bad, are approaching that 60% capacity and really are near failing. We wanted to do that to be able to maximize your transportation dollar investment. If we started pouring a lot of overlay money and, and maintenance money into the poor roads, then, while I may bring those up a little bit, it's, your, your roads that are in fair and good condition will deteriorate quicker than, than the ones that are closer to that, that failing condition. And so part of the, the first part of the transportation plan was to identify where we want to focus maintenance efforts on and, and then let the roads that are in poor condition go ahead, because you're, you're not gonna, you're not gonna catch those all the way. Let M Y get five or 10 more years out of it and then start looking at reconstruction on those roads rather than putting all of our maintenance money on those segments and then not having money to maintain the, the roads that are in good condition. Because when, when you start maintenance of a roadway, it's a, it's a pretty level and then it, it drops off pretty quickly. So when you do maintenance, you're, you're just extending it. It's a lot better to maintain a road at, when it's just starting to deteriorate, you get a lot more life out of it by maintaining it at that higher level, and it's at 85, 90% of its capacity, you can extend that life out a lot, a lot longer for the same dollar amount then if you start focusing on reconstruction. So it's a, it was a management tool. Roads that have a lot of potholing or severe alligator cracking with, with rutting, a lot of water damage usually are the ones that are at that, that failed state. Matter of fact, water is the bane of all pavement, so that whether it's concrete or asphalt, it, poor drainage is a bad, is a, is a bad thing for it. So we, we identified that we drove every road in the city, evaluated, came up with a prioritization plan, and, and part of the transportation plan would be a, an annual maintenance plan for the roadways to get you the most life out of those roadways for the amount of money that you spend on them. Is there a road that you think shouldn't be poor that maybe should be good?
Well, Sam probably misses better than I do, but the main one through his subdivision, I didn't, like, I've driven it a few times and didn't think it was like that bad compared to the...
Better put your seatbelt on.
Yeah.
No, I, my question would be like, on Henry Clay Boulevard, obviously we just did something, what did we do?
Chip and seal.
Chip and seal. Made our, my, my, made it worse. But you're saying this road is poor, we just spent money to chip and seal it, should we have just...
So that's what he's kind of referencing, that that's the Band-Aid to keep it from going further in the wrong direction.
And, and, you know, when you get to poor, you're, you know, I, I just realized that I caught myself on something and I looked like I hit it harder in my arm, but when you hit, when you just put a Band-Aid on that, that stops it. But if it's, if you're missing four or five inches of your skin and, and a little Band-Aid's not gonna help it. And so Henry Clay is an old road, it's, it's seen a lot of, a lot of traffic, a lot of buses and, and truck traffic on there.
Do you need a Band-Aid box?
No, no, thank you, it stopped, but I just realized that when I, when I got here. But the, Henry Clay is, is a roadway and chip and seal is not gonna gain you very much. You know, and it might get you through a season or two before it's back to, to where it was, because a, a chip and seal and even a thin overlay is just a surface treatment. But if you've got potholes and rutting, your, your failure's not on the surface, it's down in the subgrade. And that's where you gotta, you gotta go to fix the pavement at the place that it's failing. And, and all pavement is, is designed with layers. And so your, you know, soil won't handle the truck, but you, you take in, modify things like gravel and either asphalt or concrete that helps spread the, the load on those wheels out so that you don't get that rutting. Pavements fail when different elements, different sections of that fail. You can have a surface fail, you can look at an asphalt road, and if you ever go along the roadway and you see a lot of gravel, little small grit pieces in the gutter, that, that's called raveling, where some of the sand and the, the aggregate is coming out because of the UV degradation of the, the asphalt cement is letting it fall apart. When that happens, water gets into the pavement and starts working down and, and you have other failures. So chip and seal helps seal that off while the base is still good. And that's chip and seal or thin overlay, microseal, they all do the same thing to help, help extend the life of that pavement to protect the lower layers that gives you the strength. But if you, if you, if you've already begun to have base failure and what have you, a, a chip and seal's not gonna help you. And I think looking at Henry Clay, I mean, there's some areas that are certainly better than others, but as a whole, it's, it's gone through that life cycle. And so if we spend a lot of money on it, you'd want to look at maybe a structural overlay, we're looking at three or four inches of real heavy-duty overlay, and that, that gets to be pricey.
How much did we spend on that chip and seal?
That went out and the entire chip and seal, mil and overlay budget last year from a line item I got.
I just look at it as, you know, if this is just, this, that's a pretty expensive Band-Aid for just two or three years, I mean...
A lot less than...
Five million dollar cash.
Yeah, well...
Yeah, grinding it up, yeah.
We'll, we'll get to a sheet with this cost estimate.
Yeah, I know, I saw the cost estimate, I looked into it, I'm just saying, you know...
Well, and that's, that's kind of, that's, that's kind of why we, we wanted to do it, we wanted to prioritize the maintenance part of it. And, and that's why we want to do this assessment, to give you the tool to say, okay, I wanna, I don't want to waste the money, that's not gonna help. And so that's what this is. Now, are there gonna be segments of roadway that, that maybe a, a chip and seal would help? Yes, but you're still, if it's in a poor condition, if it's red on here, then it's not likely going to be a, a long-term fix.
Right.
And so, and, and if the parade's there and you got something that's important, maybe it, maybe it warrants that, but for a short, short-term fix. But the, the whole idea of this was to give you guys the, the tools to identify where to focus, what types of improvements, and help, help that, that maintenance budget go longer for you.
For, for clarification, I, I 100% agree, I realize how expensive it is. I'm just saying like, in two or three years or five years or whenever it is, when we, you know, bulldoze that road to repave it, that's money down the drain, the chip and seal.
Sometimes though, you gotta do it, I mean, Henry Clay is one of your most heavily-traveled roads, sometimes you don't have a choice. You know, it's, 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 is it a, do I do this bad choice or this worse choice? And that's, I, I think it, there's a lot of wisdom in going through and doing the, the, coming up with a management plan and looking at your master plan and, and targeting things, and so, you know, you're, you're elected to be good stewards of the city's resources, and so we're trying to help you with that, so...
And as you get into this further, like, we're talking maintenance versus capital as well. So the point of this, from a maintenance perspective, is to keep those yellows from going further or try and bring them back to green. Those are the ones that are still salvageable without a multimillion dollar project.
We had a red that's taking red.
Yeah, once it, once it's red, it's...
You had a brand-new road that's yellow, so...
Yeah, and you have a lot of good roads in good condition, you got a lot of concrete roads, and, and concrete roads fail in a little bit different way than asphalt roads fail, but that's, they have a little more longevity, they don't have the surface failure that asphalt roads have, so you have some good things about your road network. And, and what we're seeing here, and what you're seeing on, on this map is not, it's, it's actually typical of most cities, most communities. It's a, it's a fighting, a lifelong, that community's fight, you're always gonna be having to maintain and, and stay ahead of it.
You say asphalt fails faster than concrete or twice as fast?
They fail in different ways. Concrete, if it, if it's put in right, you know, the surface doesn't, isn't as affected by UV degradation like asphalt is. Your, a lot of times your failure is concentrated at your joints, and so it's a little bit easier to, you just dig out and repair that joint. You'll see that on MoDOT on their highways, they'll, they'll go in and, and block off a lane and overnight fix a half a mile of, of joints and they open it up the next day. It's, it's more expensive than an overlay, but it, it's, if you have concrete streets and you don't have that surface degradation, then you, you stay ahead of it with the control of the water that gets into the cracks. And so we have roads that are rated fair in concrete here, they're, they're, some of the yellow roads are concrete and they're fair because we need to go through and seal the cracks, because we want to keep the water from getting down to the subgrade. And that's a, the city has a crack sealing machine and, and a crew, and we're gonna, we're gonna recommend that, hey, you keep that up. That's probably one of the best, best things you can do to stay ahead of, of failure of your concrete pavements. So, yeah, there's, they, concrete usually is more durable if it's put in right, but they, they fail in different ways. And it's concrete, if it fails, you know, you gotta dig it up and replace little panels. Sometimes asphalt roads, just put a three or four inch overlay on top of it and treat what's underneath it like a base. And, and there's sections of State Highway and 76 down in Taney County and Berry County that are nothing but a gravel road that was overlaid with chip and seal 50 times in the last 70 years, and it's eight or nine inches thick of just solid asphalt. So different pavements, different maintenance schemes, but, and you, you have some good pavements, and I think if you take this approach, you can make those good pavements last a lot longer and it'll give you time to focus on repairing the ones that are failing and, and buy us some time.
Quick question, when it comes to maintenance, for instance, the road I live in, it was concrete cul-de-sac, you know, and it survived 30 years. It wasn't horrible, but it was starting to show its age, needed some work. So they did the overlay on it, dug out an overlay, and that was like two years ago, three years ago, and it's already starting to show small cracks, it's not horrible right now, but is there something we should be doing to, you know, they're big enough to let water down in there and it's gonna create...
Crack sealing is the number one thing with concrete, and the thing with...
But this is overlay.
Well, I know, but you, but the thing with, uh, concrete has a joint, they're, they're in panels. And so when you overlay asphalt over concrete, that crack is gonna reflect up in there, because the, the concrete on the bottom expands differently than the asphalt on top, just heat, thermal, moisture, whatever. And so a lot of times if it's, if the surface is becoming pitted from just salt over the years, it'll, it'll pit the surface, and asphalt overlay will help, will help that, but you're still gonna get that reflective cracking, you still need to do crack sealing there, because that's what protects the base, that everything is, everything is settled on. Okay, because all of the pavement bridges the soft soil underneath so that dump trucks and buses and pickup trucks can go over it without sinking down and rutting it.
So we should be really searching for those, even though they're straight cracks, once they start cracking, we need to get those sealed?
With, I would seal, I would seal asphalt road or asphalt overlay over concrete, yes, absolutely. That's, that's, and that would be, you know, once the, you have the surface treatment of the chip and seal or overlay there, then the, the best long-term thing would be to crack seal that, especially if it's at concrete underlayment. Good question. Alright, any other questions on that? That's a major part of what we're doing for you in the report, we'll have kind of a three or four-year plan and a budget for that, but it'll, it'll be based on that, how do we get the longest life out of your system that we can? And, and we have some recommended improvements that we'll get to. Alright. When you do a, a, any kind of infrastructure plan, you're, you're trying to predict the future. How many people are gonna be on it, how many cars are gonna be on it, where does it need to be to, to service our system? And, and so the comprehensive plan, you guys went through a, a pretty detailed analysis of, of projection of growth. I, I took this from your comprehensive plan, scenario A, you estimated that the 3.8% growth over the next 20 years, and that's, if you look at the graph, this 3.8% is that straight line, but if you look at what your actual numbers are, they're, it's, it's steeper than that. You know, you're, if, if, the steep projections with the 9,000 is, is almost for the average, they looked at, that, that straight line average looks at from 1940 all the way to 2030. Well, after World War II and in the 90s, when they did some expansion at the University in Columbia, that's really where you've seen your bigger growth. So we looked at both scenarios, the next page has the, the smaller scenario growth of 2.3%, but I think looking at 3.8% is more reasonable, because there's a lot of stuff going on with Columbia and the growth they're seeing in the I-70 corridor, and obviously the connection between there and Jefferson City. I think the city of Ashland is gonna be, you're gonna be looking at a lot higher growth. And so we, we based our projections of growth on that higher 3.8%. And what we did, we took traffic counts, MoDOT traffic counts within the city, and we, we grew that, we grew that traffic by 3.8%, and then we also did something different. We, we took a, looked at your land use map, proposed land use map in the area and said, what happens if everything begins to develop in this area? You have commercial area and houses, and we took trip generation rates by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE has a trip generation rate based on land use, and we assumed a certain level of development of that, and, and we added that traffic to your roadway network and did some projections. And, and based on that, now, if you, with the, the city's current standards of an arterial roadway, your traffic, they're based on traffic volumes instead of use. In the city's current standard says anything over, I think 2,500 vehicles a day is a arterial roadway. And there, there are county roads that get more than that. And so what we looked at were roadways... And so what we looked at were roadways, uh, and how they were used. And, and usually you can get easily 10 to 12,000 vehicles a day on a two-lane road, depending on how it's used, without any, without any problems. Um, now, 10 or 12,000 vehicles a day when I've got a lot of businesses, drives and stuff in that roadway, of course, that's not gonna be as good. You'll need left turn lanes for that. Uh, you go, uh, you get over 20,000 vehicles, that's when you start looking at four-lane roads or four-lane with a median, five-lane roads. And so you're, you're not anywhere near that with the traffic growth. Uh, and we identified, we looked at, uh, your main roads you need to be concerned with is Route H and then Broadway, because there are gonna be 10,000 vehicles a day based on that growth. And, uh, Route H is a MoDOT roadway, Broadway is M and Y. And so those are roads that, as traffic goes and grows, you'd be able to work with MoDOT to try to get some assistance in that expansion. But I think, looking at the growth on your roadway network, uh, it, it's not the additional traffic that you have to worry about as much. It's, it's that connectivity. And that was something that came up in the comprehensive plan. Um, there was a lot of concern with being able to get in and out of, uh, in and out of the city. The next map gives you the, what we propose is the future roadway functional classification. Uh, the blue, and I apologize, I'm a park colorblind, so that might be purple.
It is purple.
It is purple? All right. I usually have somebody along who kicks me in the shin and lets me know when I make a mistake. The, the bluish-purple, dark blue is, uh, are collector roadways. Uh, freeway again is the, um, uh, the green?
Brown.
Brown. The arterial, red, and then the minor collectors, the lighter green. And so if you look at the roadway, you have, uh, a lot of, uh, collector roadways. H becomes, and I know MoDOT has that listed as an arterial roadway, but it's really just a collector because it's connecting the airport to the arterial roadway. And we're looking at long-term, 20 years out, that you, you focus on developing north-south corridors through the city and rely on, on roads, corridors that are there. Highway DD, Ranks Line Road, uh, you could expand on Robbie's Forbes Road. Uh, we, you have Crump Lane in town. Uh, but I don't think you want to use Crump Lane for a major corridor through town. I bet you can tell me why.
Schools.
Schools, yeah. You got a lot of, you don't want people blowing through town. You got kids on bikes and everything. So I think that one of the things that we, in the functional classification, we wanted to look at how the roads were being used. And so Crump Road's not really a, a, it, it's a collector, but it's a collector because it, it provides access to the school, which is a major generator. And one of the things that we did in the analysis was we, we did travel time studies to look at overall level of service on the roadways in, in your peak hour. And, uh, we, we would look at how long it took to get from one side of town to the other through the school district. And, and you have most of your roads, even the interchange, uh, with 63 and, and Broadway is, uh, it operates at a level of service C in a, in a peak hour condition, which is a pretty good rating. And the roundabouts that, that MoDOT's done there is, is gives you capacity. People don't realize how safe and how much capacity they can really add. But you, you've got capacity in those roundabouts for the immediate future, for the focal period of this study. Uh, but where you do have congestion is where you have, where you have schools. And, and circulation around schools, again, that's not something that's unique to, to the city of Ashland. That's, uh, I've seen it in Branson, seen it in Springfield, seen it. It's something that is an issue because it is a major traffic generator. And so one of the things that we're proposing is that from a, a north-south corridor, let's rely on, on maybe MoDOT's highway, Highway DD, and maybe, uh, connect some of the dots there to the north, connect it up to Route H and, uh, and create kind of this envelope of north-south corridors for the city. And that would allow for you to have economic development, traffic flow through the city and maybe some other connection points to the existing interchange on 63. So that was a real quick review. Any questions on that? Does that make sense? Senior Eagle? Okay, again, the big map's following that. Um, let's talk about, uh, the improvements. Uh, and this is the basis, the overall transportation plan graphically. Uh, you see roads, uh, with dots on them, the big dots. We're recommending that, one of the things we're recommending is that the city take a complete street approach to its system. And complete streets, you're looking at providing service and circulation for pedestrians, for bicyclists, for multi-modal transit. And that was something that came out of the desire listed in the comprehensive plan. And so we're proposing that you do a, a citywide network of, of, um, bike and pedestrian access along your major, uh, collectors. And obviously you wouldn't have like a bike lane on, on an arterial roadway, but you could have a parallel, uh, line offset from it, um, uh, along the arterial corridors. Um, the, uh, purple again, the major collectors. And so you're, you, you see where we were showing connecting and tying DD Highway up to Route H. Uh, we had some that were going through, uh, conservation districts. And, uh, we're kind of recommending that those be maybe trails and not roadways because that just, when you go through a environmentally sensitive area like that, it makes it tough to get through all the clearances and just makes it a lot more expensive. So we proposed taking, uh, DD Highway up to Highway H, um, um, and then going south to Highway A to kind of create that corridor and create a, a loop within the city. Um, the, we're looking at intersection improvements. The squares are areas where we recommend major intersection improvements. And, um, uh, Crump Lane, obviously with, with, uh, Broadway and, and, uh, Liberty Lane and, uh, Old Highway 63, that area needs some kind of, I think, intersection improvements. Or odd and askew intersection and create their own safety issues.
How would you fix, just some of these? Like what would be your opinion on how to fix like Henry Clay and Liberty in that area?
Um, you, you would, it's a, with the skew, um, you could take one and tee it in. Like if you had an entrance to the school, you could take, uh, Old 63 and kind of maybe tee it in with the school. Or, um, I'm trying to remember, school's just south of that, isn't it?
It is too.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I don't know if that line would line up with that. But if you could tee it in where you have kind of a cross and you could do a different control. Sometimes with the skewed intersection, a roundabout works with that. Roundabouts create other problems for, if you have a lot of pedestrian traffic because you don't really have, have a, a clear stopping point.
The city of Ashland, the residents that live in the city of Ashland would crucify this board if we put another roundabout in this town.
Don't put a roundabout in. I mean, there's, a roundabout is a, is a, is a, a, a safe improvement where you have a lot of, uh, heavy balanced traffic coming in. You had a roundabout reduce, when you, whenever you have any intersection, you have 32 points where you can have a potential accident. Rear end, head-on, left turn in front of somebody. There's 32 different types of accidents that you can have. A roundabout is really safe because it reduces that, that 32 potential to eight. And so it's one of the safest intersections. But a roundabout is based on continuous flow, which isn't very conducive if you have pedestrian traffic. And so a lot of times that's one of the things you find with a roundabout. I mean, it's great, I get through, but my kids can't cross it. Or I'm afraid to cross it because people are looking to get through the roundabout and not necessarily how I cross the road. And so in the areas, I know you've got some downtown where you've got sidewalks and businesses. And so if you have a lot of car accidents, that makes sense, but it creates other problems with pedestrians. So there's, I'm all for looking at other alternatives than roundabouts. Sometimes roundabout makes sense, but it's not a cure-all for everything.
I mean, this particular intersection, if you talk about, you know, school traffic, they would be backed up into the middle of the roundabout during, you know, high float hours when you.
Yeah, we saw that.
Yeah.
And that was your, school traffic was the number one, uh, cause of congestion, not the type of intersection. And so that's one of the recommendations that we have is that you work with the school district and kind of come up with some kind of circulation plan, some kind of roadway improvement that allows that without impeding traffic. I mean, you got, it, when you stop traffic on a two-lane road, you can't get emergency vehicles through. You can't get, even if you have something in school, it's just a dead stop. They're gonna drive through the yards or whatever, go four-wheeling to get people there or to get by it. And so as traffic grows, um, you know, all of your major traffic generators should look at, uh, some kind of, of traffic impact analysis just for safety's sake. Um, and so, and that's one of the recom, one of the reasons we made, you know, Crump Lane not one of your, it's just a collector, it's not, let's, let's move everything over to DD Highway just to, or D Highway, just to, uh, change the circulation pattern so that that traffic generator doesn't affect other parts of the city. So, but yes, um, intersections and the mix of traffic, you have to consider when you do it. So to your question, where, um, where Liberty Lane by the school, Old 16, Highway 63, that intersection, I think you really need to look at it, but you need to look at it with the idea of, of how is that gonna help pedestrian traffic? Because you go to school, you're always gonna have a lot of pedestrian traffic around that school. And so there are things you can do by taking that skewed intersection, pulling it in on a radius, teeing it up, adding some turn lanes, maybe you need to signalize it. I don't think it would warrant signals, uh, just yet, but you could, you could add some turn lanes and some, get things squared up so that you have some, some, uh, teed, uh, intersection activity where you got good visibility and you could, you can handle the traffic that way. But you'll have somebody complain about that too. Your team.
They're pretty nice around here.
All right. We also, the, the next map is the trail and bike network. And that was something that, you know, it was kind of stressed in the comprehensive plan. So one of the things we, we did was, hey, we need to just identify, uh, where, uh, to be able to get all the way around town where we want to have our major, uh, major bike routes or trails. Um, you'll see we got a connector from, and, and forgive me, Robbie's, what's that?
Robbie Forbes.
Robbie's Forbes Road up to the airport drive. That's a trail connection so that, you know, airport is a multi-modal, get a trail connection there. Not necessarily a road connection, but then by connecting the trails, you can create, uh, additional ways of accessing sites and commuting without necessarily getting into a car. And so basically every new roadway or collector, we want to have a, a, a bike system or roadway sidewalk with that. Uh, there's some other trails we're recommending, a trail connection, uh, through the, the conservation district up to the area where the proposed new school's gonna be up, uh, on the 63 and H. Um, in that way, we can separate, uh, the modes of traffic where it makes sense. Uh, trail has a lot less environmental impact than a road would have, especially through a conservation area, so it makes sense to kind of do that. Um, so every new road, from a complete street standpoint, you would want to address pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic, uh, as well as the vehicular traffic. So you'll see that a lot of the bike network and sidewalk network follows the major collector road network in the, that we proposed. One of the reasons we want to have this is it has to do with funding. Um, there is funding, uh, through the federal government, through the SS4 program. And one of the things I want to know, and the TAP program, I think you guys have taken advantage of the TAP program through, administered through MoDOT. Um, if you have an overall transport, uh, sidewalk master plan and you can do an approval, you can get funding, half a million, uh, $800,000 a year. And not, we've got a city of Urick has had eight half-million-dollar projects over the last 10 or 12 years, and they've got sidewalks all over their town. And they just, every year they do another segment. And it's, it's, if you can get in that process and take advantage of that funding and show that you have a plan, it makes it a lot easier to get approval for that. And so one of the things we want to have is a sidewalk, uh, and trail master plan. Questions on that? You don't feel really, really good, you're tired in your own.
I don't know if it, it occurs to you, I don't ride a bike very often.
Well, I got one of those with a battery. So I ride it farther now than I used to ride my other one, so.
You need to have an engine on it for me to be on it.
There are a lot of specialty, as the demographics change, there are a lot of people who do bike ride. This is becoming a, a major, major component. Then we have a subsystem of the sidewalk master plan. There are some sidewalks, they're not necessarily trails or multi-use trails. They're not tied to the comprehensive plan. Uh, I didn't advance that. Here we go. Uh, but I think you need to complete your sidewalk network, especially in town. And so the blue are areas where we, we believe that you need to connect some. Now, I know you have some developments that are underway and they're putting sidewalks in as they complete, so I didn't show that. But areas where we, we know that you need to complete some of those elements, uh, I, you know, they're shown there. Obviously Henry Clay, uh, Old 63, uh, connecting over, figuring out some way to get a sidewalk over the interchange, Monty Tuck. But I think that's something that you could, see if you can get some help with MoDOT from on that. Especially if you have a plan.
That's, that's a needed thing right there.
Yeah. And I think having this in your plan, identifying, then going to MoDOT and say, hey, you know, help us get a grant for it. I mean, they'll, they'll help pay for it.
So are you suggesting that we put a sidewalk down, uh, Broadway all the way down to Sunset Meadows?
I hope. Yeah.
Yes. Oh, wow.
I think that'd be good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's completely got subdivision stuff there. And Broadway is your, is your downtown business thing. And so I think, you know, as it grows, I mean, you've got a lot of businesses that aren't pedestrian-friendly, a lot of service-type businesses that necessarily wouldn't be. But as, as your community grows, your, uh, your, uh, economic face is gonna change as well. And I think having that connectivity downtown would be a, would be a boon.
We've got lots to walk towards, Wes. Only way to get to town is right down the road.
Right. That was, as a matter of fact, when we were doing the, the pavement evaluation, we were also looking at, you know, where we needed sidewalks. And we, Brian, our, uh, he's our, our pavement asphalt inspector. He's, he does all of that stuff. And he was recording where the fails, failures were, doing the video. And, and, uh, there's a part where he says, dang, we need a sidewalk here because there were people out in the street just walking right down Broadway. So, um, it's, I can believe it. This would be separate from the, the other network that was on the other page. And that would go in with the improvement of the collector system. One other thing that came up with, uh, um, with the comprehensive plan and, and thinking multi-modal, and I can see that this looks purple. So is that really purple? All right, good, so I can, got that color right. Looks purple on the map, but blue on the legend, so I don't know. Um, but you have one of the longest park system trails, or the longest park system trail in the country. I mean, that's longer than anything. park system trail in the country. I mean, that's longer than anything in Alaska, or Texas, or anything else with the Katy Trail, that's basically right next door. And there are people, my neighbor is a, he goes, and he'll go on bike rides, he rode across New Mexico and did the Katy Trail, and he did, I, there are people who do that all the time. And so if you can make a connection to the Katy Trail, it could be an economic source, certainly be something that would be a quality-of-life-type improvement. So we're showing two connections to the Katy Trail. I think it would be good to make that, of course, that will be a long-term type improvement, it'll be totally different area of funding, and you probably have to work with the county on that. But once you get it in the plan and identify it as something that you want to do, then you can begin to get some partners developed to do that. And we think the, the connecting to the Katy Trail, using existing road routes, we could probably do some parallel things along those corridors to make those connections, I think is something to consider. So. All right. Is that a crazy idea?
Eight mile.
It's a long one. And it's not something that, I, I don't think, it's, it's not something the city of Ashland would take on. It'd be something you'd partner with in whatever. You get with Boo County, you get with Department of Conservation, you get with the parks departments, and it's, it's a, but getting that idea out there and beginning to identify that potential is something that will be transformative.
So I want to call the Southern Commissioner and get them on that.
I take along.
I have other cities that have done the same and have had positive results, so.
Yeah.
It's not crazy, I disagree.
And we just did Johnson County, we did the Spirit Trail, just west of here, and connected to the fork over there. And it's an eight-mile, nine-mile-long trail we did in one project, and they got funding for it. So, and it wasn't all, it was, you know, MoDOT, Parks Department, Department of Conservation, it was a leveraged project, we had a lot of people coming in. The idea is, with the master plan, let's identify all of the transportation needs that we think will benefit us, and get them out there, and then start looking for partners to help us get that completed. That gets us to the implementation part, where I think is the, probably one of the most important parts of the, of the project. Once you start building things and get them built, it's easy to come up with other things to do. Okay? My wife is the best at that. As soon as I get a honeydew done, she's got 10 more for me to do. Transportation plans, master plans, growing's gonna be the same way. Once you get successful and you implement things, you'll find that there's a whole lot more that you can do. And so, that's kind of the, an out there improvement, I think it'll be good. Anybody want me to take it out? All right. All right, that takes me to what I really wanted, I want to give you that review of where we're at. There's, there'll be a section, a lot of narrative within, some other documentation that we've kind of developed some drafts on to make sure we're going the same, the right direction. But this is, this is a tabulation of everything that was on this map on that map, okay, the master plan. So everything that's on here, I have, we have tabulated in this table with an estimated cost. And you're gonna see that we got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 different criteria, rating criteria. And the, when you, we're looking at, because when you look at all of those improvements on that map, it's, you kind of ask yourself, where am I gonna start? How am I gonna get this done? And the only way to do it is to prioritize. And so, we identified these 10, 10 criteria to determine what would be the most important project to focus on. And the rating's pretty simple. Zero or one is, is bad, whatever, whatever the criteria, that we don't want it, or it's too expensive, or, you know, it's, I don't need it, yeah, I know we need it, but I don't need it till 2045, right? It's something I don't need right now. So, a one or a zero, a lower ranking means it's less desirable. A two is, okay, that's medium. Three is, man, I really want it now. Okay? I really need it, or it's really important. And so, the first rating was the, the communities want. Is it something that was referenced in the, in the comprehensive plan specifically once or twice, or two different ways? And so that's how we rated it. If it wasn't really rated, or wasn't the idea of it, I mean, some of the, some of the comments from the comprehensive plan, we need, you know, new north-south corridor. Well, okay, so maybe this wasn't named, but it's a north-south corridor improvement, so maybe they got a two. Does that make sense? And then, the other rating would be economic impact. If it fed potential for economic growth, you know, you've got improvements up near the industrial park off AH Highway, improvements that allow circulation and connectivity to that would be an economic boon to the community. Improvements maybe to Broadway, your, your town's business center, that would be considered a, an economic improvement. If we could do something that would help circulation downtown, improved access to 63 Highway, that's kind of the main corridor. The city of Ashland is a, is a bedroom community in Boo County, and then most people go to work either to Columbia or Jeff City. So 63 is kind of that, that lifeblood access. So anything that improves access to 63 would get a three. If it didn't really have anything to do with that, it might get a one or a zero. Improved congestion near the school, okay, that would, that would get a three. If it didn't have anything to do with school, it'd get a one or a zero. North-south corridors, obviously you've got connectivity to, up there at AH Highway, that would get a higher rating, if funding was available. Okay? And funding would be, if there's a specific funding for trails, then that might get a two or a three. If it's a, funding is available for, you know, a safety thing, MoDOT safety thing or something, then that would, that would get a higher rating. If it's, if you have a dedicated tax for sidewalks or something, maybe that would, that would be something where you already have the funds available to do it, then it would get a higher rating. And let me go through here some of these things. This may be a little bit easier to read. So stated community desire, these are all positive criteria that we rated. So if it was, economic impact was a good for business, it got a high rating. If it approved accessibility, Highway 63, it would give a good rating. Congestion, north-south corridor, funding sources, immediacy. If it's something that, that there is an immediate need, okay? For example, the, if we needed to do something to improve circulation around school, improve safety and reduce congestion, that's an immediate. If there's something that was an immediate need that we could address with a simple project, then that would get a three. If it's an immediate need, like, hey, we need a new interchange, but it's not something that's, I mean, it won't take 10 years to get that designed and funded and approved and everything, so that's, might be an immediate need, but it's not something that's immediately able to be done, it would get a lower rating. And then, if something's within the city control, if it's a city road and it's not something you gotta get MoDOT approval for, you don't need to get special permits, environmental permits or anything, then that would be something that you can do that right now, then that would get a higher rating. Then there were some negative ones. If, if you had a project that had a lot of environmental concerns or DPA issues, a new roadway or new interchange would have environmental clearances that you've got to go through. If it's an improvement through a Conservation District or something, that's got a lot of extra, a lot of the extra hoops to jump through, that'd be a negative thing. And then cost, you know, if it's a $30 million project, that's not gonna get a high rating, it's gonna be a low rating. So, it helps us prioritize. So this will give you a little bit of how the rating is done. For most of them, a rating of zero, one is not helpful, rating of two is somewhat helpful, rating of three is very helpful. For costs, if the project was less than $800,000, could be done less than $800,000, it got a rating of three. If it could be done between 800 or 900,000 and 5 million, which is a medium-sized project, if you got MoDOT funding and stuff, that would get a two. If it was a bigger project, 6 million to 10 million, then that'd be a one. If it was over 10, the interchange, that would be a zero. And those would be areas where we'd look at, at additional funding. But that helps us prioritize, because if you could say, hey, this is the, the interchange is the most important thing, and we're gonna take all our money for the next 20 years and put into it, you probably wouldn't be able to get it done still. And MoDOT's not gonna let you do that unless you have the connector roads built anyway. So, hopefully, they, they worked together. Then immediacy. If a project could be done and completed in one to three years, then it got a three rating. If it would take four to 10 years, it would be two, a two rating. If it was greater than 10 years, it would get a one. If it's greater than 20, it'd get a zero. Do those rating rates, does that make sense? Do you want me to change something? Is that, you know, we, we picked the dollar amounts based on just, you know, we're like a common TAP or STBG grants, they'd be, they'd have different price ranges. And so we figured that would kind of make sense. But is there anything you think I should change on the rating?
Take it with you, review it, send back feedback, obviously on the whole book.
So, back to the priority matrix. Steps, next steps. We're gonna take your comments, and if you agree with the prioritization and the improvements identified, we missed something, then let me know, we can add it. This is gonna be your plan. You know, we, I think the, the recommendations that we have here make sense, and kind of give you flexibility, and will kind of help you grow and be prepared for growth. But if there's something that we miss, this is your plan, tell me. You know, I don't, I, there's nothing, not gonna hurt my feelings, I want you guys to be comfortable with what we're gonna do, because I want to help you implement it. So, if, what I would like, before I go and do anything else, is make sure the priority rating is, you guys are in agreement with, because I want to, the last part of this, I'm gonna give you a capital improvement plan, that you're gonna go out and start take to the regional planning authority and MoDOT and say, hey, this is what we want to go, and start getting it on the list, getting it on the radar. So, if I could get you guys to approve, verify, or say, hey, make these changes to the priority matrix, we'll do that. And then we'll take your other revisions and prepare the final plan. And then you guys, as a city, need to adopt it, officially adopt it. Because once you adopt the master plan, that becomes a, it becomes a management tool. You can deal with developers and say, hey, you know, you want to put this in here, we're gonna have a major collector roadway through here, you gotta help us with the rideaway and do the improvements and, and develop along this quarter. It's a tool for you to use. You need to adopt it. It becomes, it'll have that, that regulatory weight when you do that. After you adopt it, we get into the plan and we begin to implement, there will be some recommended revised design standards. We'll recommend that you do a complete street design standard. You know, not every street has to be the same. You want to look at the functional classification, and then design the road for what it is. How many of you ever got a speeding ticket going down a road, and you got speeding ticket because you wasn't even looking at your dirt speed, your odometer? You know what most people do when they drive a road? They drive the road at the speed it was designed for. You know what most highways are designed? Because their engineers are afraid of being sued, and so they, they, if it's a 50 mile an hour road, I'm gonna design it for 70. And then they can't figure it out why everybody's driving 70 miles an hour on a 55 mile an hour road. Because people don't pay attention, they drive the road the way it's comfortable. Complete Streets takes the, looks at the road and says, how do you want to use this road? If you want to use this road for neighborhoods, for people to, to live on, you need to design the road so that people will drive it and feel comfortable driving it at 20 miles an hour, and they'll feel uncomfortable when they're driving it at 30 or 35. And if it's by a school, you want to design the road to be driven at a 20 or 30 mile per hour design, so that it's safe for the school. You want to have the circulation. Complete Streets does that. That's the Federal Highway Administration, their focus, their recommended, when you design a road, you need to pick a target speed that you want the road to function at. Not just design it, over-design it, so that, you know, if somebody speeds and have an accident, you can say, well, you know, they were over the speed limit, so I'm covered. We, we need to start looking at designing roadways for how they're gonna be used. That's why I started off with functional classification. How's the road gonna be used? And then, adopt, I would recommend, these are recommendations, you don't have to do it, but this will help with implementation, because it'll also help with funding down the road for improvements. Complete Street, Vision Zero, Safe System approach, have that as a policy. You can have in your policy, reserve rideaway and setbacks, standardized review processes, checklist, we can implement those. I know one of the things that, that most cities are frustrated with is completing connectivity. You know, you got a road, we were just talking about that when we came in, that, you know, your developer builds a road here, and this guy comes in, and he doesn't like where that guy entered the road, and, and so you stop the road there. And you have in your ordinance already that they're supposed to connect, but having a standardized process, you can make a checklist, does this plan meet that? Adopt the prioritized capital improvement plan and get it placed on the original, on the regional CIP, and then begin to pursue additional and alternative funding for improvements. Grants, there are state grants, federal grants, there are private grants. You can look at tax levies, if it's something that's, that's an improvement, that, that helps the city maybe do a TIF or a tip, or attorney can help you come up with all the different acronyms. But there are different things. If it's important enough, it's a safety thing for school, get the school on board. And then there's also public-private partnerships. But those things, the hardest thing, I've been doing infrastructure design of all types for communities for almost 40 years. The hardest thing is not the engineering. Hardest thing's not the analysis. The hardest thing is getting the money. Kyle will tell you that. Okay? And, and you guys know that. And so, but having the plan helps you leverage for going after federal grants, raise grant, build grant, TAPs, other things like that. Yes, sir?
You complete your thought. I just had a question about, on the priority matrix.
Okay.
Is the order that they're in, from top to bottom, it looks like in general, it's by the ratings, you know, from the highest, it's 27.
I didn't, because I wanted to make sure you were, you were comfortable with how I did it. I mean, I, I went through, and that's the rating I came up with, and I left that number. When, when I get the feedback from you that says, hey, you know, we agree with this, then what I'll do is I'll reorder them from top to bottom.
Top to bottom.
But what I wanted you to see was, I didn't want to, I didn't want to taint the mix with, this is my idea. I wanted you guys to look at it and kind of see how it works. But then also, you know, you may see that, well, this one down here is maybe, maybe item, I don't know, I can't read, a bike route on Airport Drive, that's item 16. You may say, hey, I don't know what's wrong with you, that's the most important thing in my community, you need to give it 22 bonus points or something. And that's okay.
Gotcha.
Okay? So.
But the final plan will have this.
Yes. When you're done, and I take all of your criteria in, and I'm gonna rely on Kyle to help me weed through stuff, because if you tell me that's, needs 21 points, and then the mayor says this one over here needs 21 points, I need to balance that. So you guys kind of gotta help me agree, because this is gonna be something that yours is gonna rule, okay?
For instance, like, you know, I see the second one, bike lane on Crump. You know, I don't disagree with the rating on it, 22, but if it were down below 23 and above 21, it would make it easier for me to read.
Well, you can, you can, there's, there's some, okay, let's talk about that, that's a great, great point. The bike lane on, on Crump is something you can control. Let's say we compare that to the new- Let's say we compare that to the new interchange that you want with sixty-three, right? Well, you're not going to, that's going to be thirty million dollars. You're going to have to get help from MoDOT to do it, okay? So that might be a high priority. Maybe that's the number one priority. Maybe that's what you want. You can't do anything with that until you get help. So you might have a list of, these are the most important ones, but until I get that, then you may have a list of the local ones that you can control and say, I'm going to begin doing these. So you might have a tiered capital improvement plan, right? You just look at the ones that you could do. And, you know, MoDOT's not going to give you an interchange until you get the connecting roads up there for them to connect to. That'll be a big thing. That's working with the City of Marshfield on their new interchange on I-44. And that was a big thing that they had to do. They had to get the connecting roads built. So that's important. Does that seem reasonable to everybody? I, so I need your help. I need your feedback. I mean, I'm, I'm working for you, but I need you to tell me what to do. And so I can do the analysis and it, I, these are the things that make sense to me from just a purely transportation engineering-wise. But I don't live here and I don't, I tried to listen to the passion of the community. There might be something that you want to do that's just important, and that's okay. Because it's your town and how you want to develop. We want to get it on the plan and, and represent it so that you can begin to use it to help manage development, growth, business in your, in your town and get you to where you want to be in the next ten or twenty years.
Might give them a, give them a deadline for feedback.
Can you have me something in two, two weeks? Or is that too short? Two weeks?
Too long.
Too long? Tomorrow, eight o'clock, on my desk. Two weeks is fine, I'm, that'll, I, I want you guys to think about it. And I know we went through a lot of stuff and hopefully not too much engineering ease. You know, this is, this is how you want to, how you want to build your community. So I want to, I want to get you that. So two weeks, and then probably give me a month after that to incorporate. I've got to write a bunch of stuff and take Michael, Kyle, Michael's other edits and stuff and get those incorporated and compile it into a big, medium-sized report with all the documents and stuff to go with it.
Sounds good, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I will do this. I don't think I gave everybody my card. I appreciate your time and to praise your attendance. I only saw a couple yawns.
Thank you, sir.
I was fairly successful. Nobody's head banged off of the desk.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to appointments to boards and commissions, we have none. Schedule public comments, none. Just reminder that all public comments leaving to the city clerk by Wednesday for the meeting date. Public hearing, none.
Sure. Thanks.
Air impressions and first readings. Council Bill number two zero two five dash two nine, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an addendum to, to contract with MMLC Landscaping and Construction LLC for Oak Street and Kathman Circle project. Sac, please.
All right, we have a contract addendum. This relates to the conditions of ARPA funding and our ARPA grant with the county. So back in January, the president rescinded some federal grant rules. Obviously, we approved our contract with MMLC after that January effective date. However, for the purpose of our contract and the purpose of compliance with federal grant laws, we're actually needing to look at the date that we entered into an agreement with the county for the ARPA grant, which would have been last year. So these contract provisions were originally not included, subject to that, that, that order by the president in January. So we're looking to add those back in to be compliant with the previous rules and stay compliant with the county to be in receipt of the grant dollars. So that is all that's being proposed of this amendment. There is no cost associated with that as part of this amendment.
No delay in the project, hopefully?
No.
Any questions?
All right, can I get a motion of approval, Council Bill number two zero two five dash two nine, an ordinance authorizing the mayor enter into an addendum to contract with MMLC Landscaping and Construction LLC for Oak Street and Kathman Circle, Swoon Warren Improvement.
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
Alman Dwyer?
Aye.
Alvin Raykraft? Alvin Cooper?
Aye.
Alvin Turner?
Aye.
Alvin Bill?
Aye.
Alvin Lewis?
Aye.
Moving on to old business, ordinance number one five two four, one five two four, ordinance establishing property tax rate of the City of Ashland for the fiscal year 2025 and amending chapter five tax rate appendix A-dash-one of Ashland Municipal Code.
Second reading of our property tax rate for next year. As we discussed last month, we'll be setting it at point one seven three nine. And that will equate to about two hundred thousand dollars in anticipated property tax revenue. This is the final reading. It's due by September first to be filed. Darla's taking it up there and hand-delivering it tomorrow. So we will be all squared away and done, another year.
Can I get a motion of approval, any questions for staff? Sorry. Can I get a motion of approval, ordinance number one five two four, an ordinance establishing the property tax rate for the City of Ashland for the fiscal year 2025 and amending chapter five tax rate appendix A-dash-one of Ashland Municipal Code.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Alman Lewis?
Aye.
Alvin Bill?
Aye.
Alvin Turner?
Aye.
Alvin Cooper?
Aye.
Alvin Raykraft?
Aye.
And Alman Dwyer?
Aye.
Ordinance one, ordinance number one five two five, an ordinance of the City of Ashland, Missouri, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest by serving this municipal officials.
Again, second reading, we're required to have our conflict of interest ordinance in place. Ours is about to expire. Again, another September due date on renewing this ordinance. For those that have been on the board for a minute, you've done your conflict of interest disclosures. You know what these are. This is just the ordinance that backs that up.
Any questions for staff? Can I get a motion of approval, ordinance number one five two five, an ordinance of the City of Ashland, Missouri, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest by serving this municipal officials?
So moved.
Can I have a second? One second. Alman Dwyer?
Aye.
Alvin Raykraft?
Aye.
Alvin Cooper?
Aye.
Alvin Turner?
Aye.
Alvin Bill?
Aye.
Alvin Lewis?
Aye.
Ordinance number one five two six, an ordinance authorizing the mayor enter into an addendum to contract with MMLC Landscaping and Construction LLC, Oak Street and Kathman Circle project.
Second reading.
Yes, sir. Can I get a motion of approving, ordinance number one five two six, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an addendum to contract with MMLC Landscaping and Construction LLC, Oak Street and Kathman Project.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Alman Dwyer?
Aye.
Alvin Raykraft?
Aye.
Alvin Cooper?
Aye.
Alvin Turner?
Aye.
Alvin Bill?
Aye.
Alvin Lewis? Moving on to new business, we have none. Moving on to reports. Mayor's report, just got a few things. How are we doing on grass?
We have multiple hearings every week, so.
Good, good, good. Chief, have you had a chance to talk to the church about driving the wrong way?
Kevin Crooks said he had been in touch, I talked to him, he said he was handling it. He's been in touch with him. And they've got several things working.
Thank you very much, sir. And then I had a young lady talk with, call me today about speeding on Commerce Drive. If we can just cruise through there and check it out and see. Would it be beneficial to put something in the newsletter about speed bumps? Because I had some chatter on Facebook about they want a speed bump, but yet they don't want a speed bump. And I'd like to explain to people what the pros and cons are for the speed bumps. What do you think?
So the thing about speed bumps is we, I use it in towns with no police. Speed bumps are a mess in the snow. The shovels bang them up. It's a problem for plowing streets.
We know, we've had them here.
We've, we've agreed, I agree with you. But a lot of the citizens are chattering about it on Facebook, and I would like to just put something.
I mean, we have a city that rhymes with Mida that put in like eighteen speed bumps. And all they got for their trouble was busted shocks.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, police work for helping with speeding, but speed bumps, and they get tore up every winter. You, they do make some that are designed to be removed readily, but it's better than nothing, but not much.
Yeah. I agree. I just thought if we put something out for the public to see. And that's my report, sir. Moving on to city minister.
Just a couple updates. So TAP bids were opened last Monday. We do have two bids. We're still going through the review process of those bids and packaging those for MoDOT. The next step would be MoDOT to review those bids, confirm our request to award one of those bids. That could take a couple of weeks, once we get these bids packaged up and sent over to them. So we're probably looking at late September, when we would have it before the board for review and approval of awarding a bid. So, so we're at there. Road construction, so obviously, road construction has started. I know I was speaking to a few of you before the meeting, but the contractor did get recalled back to I-70, so they're off the job site for the most part. So there's going to be a slight delay on those resurfacing projects. Their goal is to get Liberty done before school starts. And just get away, obviously, from that intersection as quickly as possible. But the rest will, will lag a little bit behind. We don't have a definitive date at this time, but we'll keep the public informed as we can. Waste water treatment plant, well underway. I know a few folks have gone down there recently, but haven't been down there for a while. It's at the site, so if you have not stopped by and you'd like to, whether on your own or with some supervision, just let us know and we can take you down there. They will be starting a very large cement pour on Thursday. They're going to start about two o'clock in the morning, and that's going to be continuous pour until it's done. So that's, you know, probably going to be close to a twenty-hour day of pouring concrete. So a lot of trucks moving through there, so just be aware of that if you use Peterson. And I believe that is all I have.
Thank you, sir. City attorney's report.
The city code review is underway. My colleagues are more than halfway done. We're on track to have that completed by the end of the month, so that's good. And I'll have some stuff for you enclosed. That's my report.
Please, Chief, come up.
Yes, sir. I want the report in the package. We've got, we had a new employee started Monday. Got her sworn in and she's beginning field training. And thought that we've got one opening right now. We have one we're hoping to interview next week, see how that goes. And ready for the rodeo.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
I like the watermark on the, on the report, the background there.
He's good. Sergeant Rick Smith's the one who puts this together for us. He's very capable and creative, to say the least. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to community development month. Report was in the package.
I kind of want a watermark. I'll work on it.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to treasurer's report.
The City of Ashland has won the Government Finance Officer Association Award for this year for our annual budget.
Really?
Yes, second year in a row.
Good job. That's terrific.
Awesome. Thank you.
You should teach classes.
No. He's got me booked up between now and next year.
Next year's board. We know we have another year in a row, right? Three years in a row?
He's packing my schedule.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to board of aldermen. Alman Dwyer?
No report.
Alvin Raykraft?
No report.
Alvin Cooper?
I don't really have a report. I think I just have a request for future road work. I, I know is out of our control. They got called back to I-70, but I do think that it's not going to go very well, that we have unfinished roads right before school started, especially since they started on Monday, the week before school starts. I think we need to do, if there is any way in the future when we have projects like this around our schools, if we can require that this work be done at the beginning of summer. I just think that it's not really fair to our citizens when this happens right before school. I mean, for some, it's stressful already and it's, I think it's frustrating. So it's really just my request for future.
Alvin Turner? Ready for the rodeo? Why, take a team?
Man, I'm a band sponsor. Big dog. So I reached out to Kyle this week about, I've gotten a few complaints about Oak Street. People speeding through there, coming through to get back to like Woody's and Mary Jane's Place and that other street through there. So I think Kyle probably talked to chief about it. So I appreciate Kyle and the chief working on that one, but just keep me updated on that. If you guys don't mind.
I mean, that goes hand in hand with, with Commerce. It's the same corridor.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same, yeah, same one.
Alman Lewis?
No report.
Thank you, sir. Any comments from the general public? Can I get a motion to go into closed session to discuss person, chapter six one zero dash zero two one legal action and six one zero dash two one, hiring and firing. So moved. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Alman Dwyer?
Aye.
Alvin Raykraft?
Aye.
Alvin Cooper?
Aye.
Alvin Turner?
Aye.
Alvin Bill?
Aye.
Alvin Lewis?
Aye.